Awesome. All right, welcome everybody to the March fourth. Sure, we'll see you give us a work session. It is six oh two P M. We could go ahead and get started. We only have one item on the agenda for the work session tonight. We have our chief of police, Ty Allen here to give us a twenty twenty four annual recording. So, Ty, take it away.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, just for historical purposes, we haven't done anything since about two thousand sixteen as far as an annual report. So, this year changed it up a little. Number one, I'm gonna need a little bit of grace because I'm using an app that's my first go around. So, go easy on me. But.
You chose it.
I know. You're right. The hours I spent trying to learn this thing. Little mercy.
Throw your city manager out of the bus.
So, I just wanted to touch base a little on how twenty twenty four went with or went for us. We'll put all this on the website when that's up and rolling, but. And that's it. Thanks.
Good job. Best one yet.
So, just wanted to touch base. Obviously, this is a message that I have just about the direction we're going, the commitment we have to the community, just our our presence and how important it is to be engaged with the community with either on social media or with all the festivals that we're attending. I highlighted a little bit, some people don't understand what it means to go from forty five hundred followers to nearly fifty thousand in just a short period. It just means that we have a lot of engagement. You know, we're trying to be professional and entertaining and thoughtful in getting out the information that's relevant. We do weekly updates. We've been doing the Crime Chronicles, so there are six, eight, ten minute videos highlighting some of the things that we're doing in the community.
And when you don't do it weekly, the community lets you know.
Yes, they do. Yeah. So, we're continuing to work on that. We're bringing some more, I shouldn't say bringing more, just more people in the department have an interest in being on that team. So, it's not all on the shoulders of one officer.
We're still containing, you know, doing a good job. I I've never seen this stuff. Doing a nice job, but it's X number of hours a week put towards it type of the thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We're not that one tripling the hours.
We don't have full time officer to it. He's just so good that he can do it quickly and efficiently. So, it's it's been a blessing in many ways. Technology and training is a big thing for us. We've talked a lot about drones and A I and they're knocking on our door. We have acquired three drones from the foundations past year, year and a half. So, we have three operators. We're planning on bringing on a couple more. So, as that evolves, we'll continue to use that. It's obviously a great tool for searching. It's a great tool for officer safety. We're not having to go into buildings. We're not having to go around backyards and corners. The dog is a great tool that we've used for years and years and still is valuable. But boy, when you can have something in the sky to tell us that somebody's there or something's around the corner, it's even better. We continue to talk about our de-escalation. Oh, thank you very much. A lot of the our M H R T team will talk about that here in a bit, but those are some of the highlights that we had for the year. This last year, we had nineteen thousand two hundred and one calls for service. Now, that's a combination of our nine one one calls and our self-initiated. So, it's an uptake from the prior years. See how fancy that was? Worked on that. So, you can see in the last three years, we continue to trend out in our calls for service. One of the things I want to highlight here and one of our goals, and in blue here is our calls for services or our demands, either non-emergency or nine one one calls that come in. We trend about six thousand a year. That's been pretty steady year over year. What has increased by about four thousand is our self-initiated.
Remind us what that means.
So, our self-initiated is everything outside of that. It's traffic stops, it's business checks, it's going out and walking the parks, it's going out and contacting somebody. It's showing up at events. It's it's just pretty much everything else outside of that that calls for service. This, one of our goals this last year was to reduce our retail thefts because we've been getting hammered pretty hard the last few years. It's kind of a double edged sword. Calls did go down, but we also there's been a lot of turnover in the remote space for loss prevention. So, we're not necessarily getting the calls. I don't think that the thefts have gone down. It's just we haven't been going there as much because of the businesses trying to get their loss prevention programs back up. But the one thing that's unique about this nineteen thousand two hundred and one calls is over the year about seventeen and a half officers handled all of those because throughout twenty twenty four, we were down about two and a half people for the entire year. So, pretty impressive for what they were able to do and accomplish with just the seventeen point five. And stop me anytime if you have questions. Whoops.
There's, are there pretty, there's just same standards about what a what counts as a self-initiated call?
Anytime, anytime I go out, anytime I I like, if I get on dispatch and I say, hey, I'm gonna, I'm going out of Snyder Park. That's a self-initiated. So, I get out and I go walk around and talk.
There's a, so there's a problem in pet community where they say, hey, we'll we'll incentivize you, bury the bug you find. It has the opposite effect where all of a sudden engineers are writing bugs. And so, because they're getting incentivized for that, right? And so, I just wanted to make sure that there's a, you know, that we're really preparing apple samples from years and it's not just we're making work or.
No.
You know.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. No, these are just, year over year, I mean, I have every call, every pad call that we've been on and it's it's pretty, it's pretty standard is what we do. Yeah, there's nothing unique out of it. Other than we just really want to encourage that community policing, just getting out, being approachable, talking to people and just engaging and making sure that people understand that we're here in the community. We wanted to sway people from coming here and committing crimes.
Yeah.
We talked about community engagement. Obviously, all the big things that we continue to do year after year, which I just think is extremely important for our community relationships. Where this is not all of them, but this just captures a handful of things that we're at that we have the ability to engage in different levels, non-enforcement related, which is the best part about it. It's just an opportunity for people to come and talk to us and hang out or for us to engage with them. So, we'll continue to do that. These were very successful this last year and we have a full schedule for twenty twenty five. So, this has been around for quite some time. This is really the cornerstones of who we are and what we do. This is really important for what I believe of all law enforcement. Really, the integrity, the accountability, the professionalism, reliability, courage and compassion is what drives us. And you can see up there all the things that account for that that we do. I've added the innovation and the health and wellness because they've just become really important in the success of any law enforcement agency, in particular ours. I'm not a big fan of complacency. I want to be ahead of the game. It seems like, well, for law enforcement in general, we're pretty responsive in a lot of ways. So, when we can be innovative and creative, we talked about drones, we talked about A I capabilities and some of the things that are coming. I want to be on the forefront of that and then equally so, just the health and wellness, just taking care of officers, giving them the opportunity to reset and go out there and be a hundred percent when they're on the job because they're an extension, not away myself, but just the community and who we represent. So, when they're out there engaged with people, we want them to be as healthy as possible. And that's where we have different programs year round for them to take advantage of and to be a part of so that they can reset. You know, whether it's health and wellness and mentally or physically, we're continuing to try to find new and creative ways to give them those opportunities. So, that is our mission and vision. I interpreted it here just a bit. Obviously, just our commitment to our service and the integrity and innovation that we'll continue to work on over the next several years. So, some of our goals and accomplishments, we've already touched on them, reducing the retail theft. One of the things that I think is really cool and it's very appreciative of council taking on our C C C C C P program, our career or career cycle program, allowing us to get ahead of the game. Historically, for years, we've always hired when somebody's retired. And as you've heard me say, and as you've learned, it takes nearly a year, if not longer, for us to then replace that personnel. So, having the ability to be upfront and today is a great example. We have two that are now on the street in training in anticipation of two retirements that we know are coming this year, most likely a third. So, being ahead of that i- is fantastic. One of the other things is just our training that we've worked on. Each officer gets about eighty to a hundred hours of training. That's from de-escalation to D T S to investigations to C P R. It's a combination thereof. So, they have an eighty hours every two years, I believe, that by D P S S T standards that we have to meet. But then this is for them to add on to anything that they may pursue. If they're looking for detective work or looking for D E A work, whatever it is, they can sign up for some classes to enhance their knowledge. Obviously, big partnership is a school district. We added our second S R O. It's he's in his second full year. So, Ben's very successful. I don't know if we'll get to a third, but right now, we're really happy with the two and where we're at. And then we've also added on members to our mobile mobile field force and our car teams. So, there's a lot of our agency teams within Washington County that we benefit from. So, either crime student comes out, serious assault or a debt. Members from all the agencies in the county come. Part is part of that. There are crash analysis reconstruction teams, so members from all over the county. Um, if there's major assault or homicide resulting from a vehicle accident. So, we have two people on our mobile field force, which responds to any kind of disruption within Washington County. So, if somebody's protesting or there's issues where we need to get down there, they'll go. And then obviously, I keep talking about drones, but that's our newest one as well.
Have you used those for any, have you used our drones for any calls?
Just one. We're working through some of the kinks in the training. There's a lot of training that goes into that more than we realized. So, our specialized units is our P and I, everybody knows Miss B. She's a tracking dog. She has a new handler this year, so he successfully completed his ten weeks and is now available and deployable and has done a great job. So, she's out there, obviously, the drones, the mobile field force cart M H R T, which I'm gonna talk about a little bit more, and our S R O teams, which are valuable.
She is a handler.
I'm sorry?
Who is the new handler?
Oh, Lucas. He's he was a lateral from a neighboring agency here a couple of years ago. So.
Do we, do we have to do career cycle planning for the dogs as well? Like, do we already have our next one kind of?
No, our career cycle planning on that comes from the foundation because they have purchased our one, two, three, last three dogs. So, we allocate money out of that to buy the next dog. So, M H R T, this is a big hot topic. And as you guys are aware, we have the one member, mental health response team. Amy, she's our second member. Adam, who you just saw come in here. He was the original member on it and then was promoted. So, Amy's on it. Our team consists of Tiger Twelton and Sherwood. So, they rotate every two weeks. There's one clinician, Crystal, I think you've met her. She rides with us for two weeks, Tiger for two weeks and Twelton for two weeks. And they respond to all mental health related calls within those three cities.
No matter where she's at that two week.
Yeah, yeah. Now, that doesn't mean that if something's going on in Beaverton or Hillsborough and they need M H R T member that we won't go. And likewise, I mean, it's counties, the umbrella program of all this, so they'll come down and help us out as well. But right now, we're down here with just our one clinician. So, these are the members that are in it. One of the things that I think is really cool is nearly, you you can see that Washington County takes the bulk of these things. Now, this wasn't a total years call. I think in totality, here around three thousand calls total for for the year, which is pretty significant. These are just M H R T responded calls. This doesn't account for any of the officers that respond to these things because we don't have twenty four seven coverage, even countywide. What is probably the best part about this, and I've talked about it, is our use of force. And I'm gonna show you that slide here in just a sec. But what's cool about this is sixty five percent of the contacts that are made are getting mental health support. There's a lot of programs out there that we can redirect them to, take them to follow up with, making sure that they have the resources and the information that they need. So, we're light years ahead of where we were fifteen, twenty years ago when this really kind of became a big crisis. So, of all these things, only nine percent of them become police custody. So, during that interaction, they've committed some crime where they've had to be taken into custody. Doesn't mean that they're not funneled back through to the resources, but at this point, they've committed some crime that they go to jail first. So, that's still pretty specific. Sometimes you you can't avoid it. And then this is, this is my favorite. Use of force. Out of nearly three thousand cases in the county, one percent is reported in using force on these subjects. We all have a little different use of force policy. For us, me displaying my taser and and pointing it at somebody is considered a use of force. We write a report on that.
When you engage in that?
No, it's, yeah, whether I use it or not. If I have to take, if I have to go hands on because they become passive resistant, it's a use of force. Really, the one time we stray from that or don't have to write a report is if they're just completely cooperative and they turn around and they do whatever we ask. So, at one percent, I think that's pretty amazing because I don't know of anybody that I've heard of over the last year where anybody's been significantly injured as a result of it. Now, there are those cases. Fortunately, you see it, you hear about it. People in their mental health crisis, they're on drugs and potentially doing other things and and they will fight. But this was not the case ten, fifteen years ago when this really became a crisis and our only tool was to take them to jail. We didn't have the mental health teams. We didn't have the training. We had, we had to have a crime to deal with them. And and as you know, it just became combative because we just didn't have the ability to be successful like this. So, I think this is a fantastic number. We'll never be a zero, but it'll always take one percent. Obviously, moving forward, just strengthening the partnerships with the M H R T. Tiger's gonna be opening up their facility here. Is it this month? Yeah, yeah. So.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
They have a facility in Tiger that's going to, so they have beds and just compassion, yeah. They're gonna be able to house these people that are in a mental health crisis or just need resources. In conjunction with that, they'll have what they call e-beds so that if we have somebody that we need to find a place for, we can take them there on an emergency basis and and give them the resources they need. So.
It's a nonprofit facility.
Yes.
Yeah, March nineteenth, I think it's.
Thank you.
Ten to eleven A M.
So.
Just want to be clear, I did that. It's not a tiger.
No.
Yes. So, your tiger facility is in Tiger. It's a nonprofit in Tiger.
That's right. Thank you for the clarification.
Receiving funding from the county.
Correct. And other.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a combination of, yeah.
Layer cake.
Yes.
Yes. The fantastic thing for us is obviously it's just down the road. We're not having to go to Hillsborough or or county. We're gonna be able to go right down the street and and be able to get them resources quickly. Obviously, we'll continue with our training and just the expanding efforts. And and part of that is just our partnership with Tiger and Twelton. Obviously, all the resources that they're allowing us to piggyback on in a sense. So.
I I do have a question about the mental health response team and the training. Is part of the thinking that in the rotation between the cities that there's informal training, I mean, riding along with the officers, is that does training happen on kind of an informal basis? Is is it like, is she with different officers each time or is it?
So, so Amy has, she's gone through forty hours of our critical incident training that is specific for behavioral health. And then on top of that, she's received additional training. In conjunction with that, she rides with a clinician, a mental health clinician. So, they they don't ride with other officers.
Okay, so it's always Amy and the.
It's always Amy and Crystal. Okay, fantastic. And and the great thing about Crystal, she's from Life Works. So, that's, that's the business or that supplies us, A T's that word, with our our clinician. What's great about her, she she's with all three cities. So, she knows everybody. It's not like we're getting a new clinician every two weeks. So, there's real good consistency with.
So, I have a question. At the risk of expanding your skill set here, could you go back to the slide that shows?
I'm just kidding. I can do it.
Okay.
Which one do you want?
Yeah, just pass it. Mental, that one right there. So, you, so we're constantly hearing in the media, and I do believe there's luxury in this, that we're not adequately funding mental health services statewide in the Portland region. Obviously, we're able to take advantage of some of those services to get help to some of those people. I'm just wondering in that that forty five percent or thirty five, sorry, I do good math. That's thirty five percent. Maybe, maybe that's where we just didn't have resources available or you know, the the center was closed or they were full or, I mean, I'm trying to reconcile what you hear constantly in the media that we don't fund this enough. Or is this just a different service from what they're talking about?
So, I don't have the specific data as to why not, but I can, I know a lot of this is people just don't take the service offer. They'll, we'll either put a police officer hold on them and they'll be admitted to the hospital and then they'll be released. And that's not a mental health support system. They're just in and out. And so, I can't say definitively what all that thirty five percent consists of, but I just know there's just a lot of refusal in that. But.
And I also know that a lot of the the intakes that you're creating are different from some, like having mental health wraparound services and housing first, you know, type facilities and stuff. I think that's a whole different.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
You know, is some of, are some of the mental health crises also, you know, very situational dependent? You know, whether the substance or not, or whether, you know, spouses in the air. And I love you. There's somewhere it's like, well, if we this person, you know, sovers up or something, there may not, you know, and and it's de-escalated, I guess.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables that play into it. You're right. Family situations, alcohol, drugs, forgetting to take medication. You you quickly get them back on their medication and they don't need additional services.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so the mayor asked you to go back a couple slides. It's gonna have you go back a slide. Use your little cursor and say you've got Beaverton, Washington County, then there's Beaverton.
Yeah, Washington County and Hillsborough are the bigger chunks.
No, Tiger's bigger.
Yeah, I guess they they are on that one. Beaverton is, so Beaverton.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm interested in the Sherwood slice.
Oh.
That'd be too.
That actually, so combined, it's three hundred and twenty with Tiger, Twelton and Sherwood. Those would be the ones that just specifically are here.
In a fair amount of right from our talk, the call is more based on who took the call because it could have been one of our officers responding to Tiger. Or it could be a Tiger officers responding to Sherwood would show up in their account.
Yeah, so Amy, our officer, goes and deals with the call in Twelton. It shows up on it as a Twelton call.
Yeah, where were, where were the persons?
Yeah, yeah. So, it sometimes those numbers can be a little skewed as how involved our officer is.
No, where it took place, if Amy responds to something like the law, it would support her at the law.
More than half the calls here, more than half the calls in our three tricity areas.
It is. And and so.
They want everybody to be helped. So, that's happens, you know.
Well, what drives that? And you see Beaverton also is because of the transit stations. All it just, just max stations there. A lot of people utilize them. Beaverton has a lot of services. Tiger has a lot of services. So, they know that. That's where they go. And and with that, you you just get more calls.
To get that. I mean, it's still probably just farther out because they have a lot of transit stations.
They do, but Beaverton's really kind of stepped up the game. I mean, so is Hillsborough. Hillsborough has a lot, but Beaverton's the first stop out of Portland. And then if he comes out here and here in Tiger pretty quickly. So.
Resting. Thanks, Chief.
Talked about these things, just our high engagement, our collaboration and and obviously the regional force are the big ones. Our training and technology advancements. So, right up here is some of our drone training. We actually have a drone where you, we have the art goggles. So, you can actually see from the drone where you're going. So, if it's out of sight. So, their training, that's one that we can utilize in the schools. It's small enough. Actually, in one, an office like this, you can zip around.
But what is Daniel thinking right now?
Not sure. What's cool is you can see what you can see as well. You can connect to a monitor and watch the drone. So, you can see what he's seeing. It is a little, I put them on there. It's takes some getting used to. Another tool we have, Leslie, this is taser. We have the ability to go in and use regal cinemas for some taser training and additional training with the dogs. But we got the drone, the taser, just our general classroom updated training. We have our range that we use. We have our wrap. You've heard of this. So, this is another thing for anybody that is just non-compliant and that rather than have knockdown dragouts on the street, we can get them into these things and restrain them, keep them safe. They're not on their belly being asphyxiated because we're piled up on them. And we can actually pick them up and move them easily and get them in a patrol car. So.
How hard is it?
Once, uh, once you can get to them and get it wrapped around, you start with the feet and kind of creep right up it. It's not terrible.
That's a little disappointing. I was hoping it was a cartoon big like net gun.
Well, you've seen those. I know you've probably seen those on pursuits. You've seen those nets that cast out and the other little things that cast out an undercar car.
I happened to walk in there when they were doing training and they were trying to convince me to play the bad guy. I was like, no, thanks.
This is a super cool one.
Oh, it doesn't get any bigger than.
If you're not familiar with it, Washington County has a mock city. So, they have buildings staged, apartments, roads. So, our officers, obviously, they're they're deputies trained there all the time. But these are a couple of our officers getting the opportunity to go in and train. So, we can simulate domestic violence calls. We can simulate mental health response calls, whatever you want to come up with. It's all controlled and we can use It's all controlled and we can use uh uh paint guns for if we need to, but it's just a great controlled environment for people to train in.
That's not a busy town, is it?
Uh, obviously, Miss B.
Can we open that up for any agency in the county to use?
Uh, no, typically, we just connect with them when they're training.
Oh, okay.
This is Miss B, uh another valuable tool. I know I talked about her tracking and how great she does for tracking humans, but uh she's also an article uh tracker, so she's been out on a lot of deployments, tracking things that have been dropped by suspects, whether it's stolen merchandise, guns, evidence, clothing, um she can go help find that, so. She's a, and she's clearly tired, because she's.
Miss B or Farmer Dog that helps someone find their keys that they lost in a field?
Uh, I think that was Irma.
That was Irma, yeah.
And then uh, this, just the academy, uh it's been around forever. It's back when I started, it was eight weeks, it's now sixteen weeks. Uh, four months down there, just kind of getting the basics of law enforcement, what that means. Uh, and then as they come back, like I said earlier, with the CCP, they spend uh nearly another four months with a FTO, a field training officer, and they go through different phases, learning different skill sets of the job, and as long as they meet the benchmarks in each phase, they advance until they're out on their own.
And are we sending anybody down there in eighth of?
Yes, our two, yeah, the ones that are just now on the road with an FTO until, I think they go April twenty-first, twenty-third.
Reserve us, that's why I had last week.
Yes, thank you. Our reserve program, which I didn't touch on, um allowed us to fast track our two newest officers. It's a great tool because number one, they get the opportunity to get into police work and understand it, whether or not they want to pursue it as a full-time job, and then secondly, we know them, and so it reduces our risk. And I've talked about this. It's, you know, we push hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty thousand dollars of an investment in an officer in their first year or so, and we don't know exactly where they're gonna land, you know, so it's it's critical, number one, that we hire the right people, number two, um that when we have an opportunity to to spend a lot of time with them, it reduces that that risk for sure, so. I think they'll be successful.
Can I add something on that, our uh the cavity that our officers go to?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think a lot of people, I know some of us do, most of us do, but just for the public watching, we're very lucky in the state to have that type of facility. You know, all the agencies shares, everybody trains to the same standards. If you go to the East Coast, it's a completely different world. Cities train different, counties train different, state, they cooperate with very, very different world world here, and we're very lucky that we have the system we have here, because in the fact that you can you can all cooperate work together and have these interagency teams is a blessing.
Yeah, that's it's spot on. Having it all standardized is is what the expectations are fantastic, so. And uh they do a great job and they continue to evolve, which I appreciate. Uh, I think they've done a great job over the last few years trying to catch up. Twenty twenty-five, just continuing on our mental health initiative and our technology and just uh again, our bench or our cornerstones are just community policing. Just who we are and what we do, uh we don't want to change that. I think that we do a great job. I think our officers value and love this community and day in and day out, you know, they're just doing things that surprise me all the time in a positive way. That they don't want recognition for, they just want to go and help people. Um, mowing people's yards, changing tires, doing things that are completely outside the scope, but in a lot of ways, but um, you know, they want to make sure that this community's taken care of, so really proud of who they are and what they're doing. And that is it. Now, this is not an updated photo because we're not gonna take that till the end of the month, but that was a couple of years ago. We've had some retirements of that. That is it on twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions?
Yeah, I see that you have in-driven decisions as well on your commitments. Do you, as a best partner, do any uh data tracking for racial bias?
Yes.
And is it public information? Public disarming to do in regards to that?
Yeah, we have to report it to the state.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, so a lot of it's complaint, well, it's complaint driven, number one, for us to understand if there's an issue there. Um, I can tell you, we haven't had any in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Um, we also, uh, so all of our traffic stops, stop data. Every time that we engage with somebody as a traffic stop, we have to identify um their ethnicity ethnicity as best we can. Geez, that's a tough word.
That self that you determine, because you don't ask them.
No, no, yes, it's some, yeah, some of it's guessing, um, uh, and we're a hundred percent compliant in that, and I tell you that because it it tells you and gives you the data of who we're stopping as far as race. And and are we are we issuing citations more to a different race or a different gender than others? And so we've done a really good job with that, um. I'm sure that data is available. I'm happy to share it. I mean, it's it's.
The the state does, I think they call it the bail of dark, the bail of darkness report, so they look at the traffic stops during the day and tie and compare those ratios, and then they scorecard each department, and that's released publicly, I think, every year.
Well, I haven't heard of that, so now I'm gonna have to look at it. I just, I know, I know all our stop data goes to the county and then it goes to to the state, um.
I just remember reading it, reading the latest report, it was like a year ago, so it's right in place, but Sherwood scored high.
Yeah. Yeah, we do a great job there as well, so.
You guys give lots of nice warnings to people.
We do.
I would know, but I heard.
If there's nothing there, I'll touch base uh real quick. I just want to give you a quick update on our photo enforcement program. So I pulled data from the last three years, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, oh shoot, hopefully that goes away. Maybe it doesn't. Anyways, these are speed violations. Touch base on them real quick. I threw two thousand nineteen in because it's kind of our last standard year where we didn't have all the construction, COVID and all of these things that um really skewed the numbers, and you can see back in two thousand nineteen, we had twenty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-seven speeding violations. Our biggest hitter is northbound ninety-nine at Sunset, always has been, always will be.
Did we turn the red light or the speeding cameras on?
Uh, I think it was the second year.
Second year.
I think two thousand.
Because there was a spike.
Yeah, two thousand eighteen, I think is when we turned them on, um. So northbound Sunset and then northbound at uh TS is the second one. And then you can see in twenty twenty-two, ninety-five hundred, twenty twenty-three, I don't know if we want to talk about that one, eighteen thousand and twenty twenty-four, seven thousand. You're gonna see, this one came up because we reduced the construction speed at ninety-nine and TS.
So we really ignored twenty-three.
Yeah, so it 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 really was, it was kind of an outlier in that, um.
Twenty-two and twenty-four, a little bit. It worked. It, I mean, there's progress and improvement from twenty-two to twenty-four.
There is, and.
That's good.
Well, part of this, and so one of the things I want to touch base on is the cameras were down significantly these three years. Between Sunset and TS, we had nearly two years of no cameras. Um, so the end, the this, so I I wanted to explain the anomaly here because these are standard when Sunset was down and then the year that um TS was down, but we had changed and had dropped the enforcement speed that year, and so we had a lot of violations.
Full charge junk. It's what I'm, is my interpretation. A lot of cameras down, a bad thing.
Well, the chart's not junk, it's just.
There's no.
You can't.
Yeah, you.
Oh, you're right, and that's that's why I gave you two thousand nineteen. That was like our one year that we were fully functional. Now, twenty twenty-five is gonna be our new reset base as to where we're at and what it looks like.
Are all the cameras up right now?
Yep.
Well, we also got rid of that um right turn camera.
It's a red light camera.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna give you that, those numbers here in just a minute. Those are, those are down as well, so um one of the things, not a big deal, other on the citation issues. Other than I just want to highlight, you know, we're at about ninety-six percent uh issuance on those, so Redflex, Veramovability now, who's taken over, they screen these these violations. Then they're sent to us and then we screen again, and so um by the time you can see, you know, what is that for, five hundred, by the time, this is what was sent to us, this is what we issue. Um, that's pretty standard as to where we're at on the speed violations. Uh, the red light violations. Uh, they're they're pretty low, um, they're a little bit more difficult. And processing, we're down in the eighties on those, but I want to give you uh where we were and you guys have already touched on it. Uh, two thousand nineteen was sixty-six hundred, and this is probably will not change in the future at all because we took away all the right hand, right turn on red stuff out. They all went away at TS and ninety-nine, and we got very little at Sunset. I mean, we'd get a few turning right on L Word and a few turning right on on Sunset there, but um since all of these right turns have gone away, um these numbers will probably stay pretty consistent.
I wasn't in council then, why did we take them away?
Just to reduce the road.
Yeah, they red.
And now you just go around.
Yield, all those are just yields.
Okay. And that's, 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 that's a good thing.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Want to write these tickets, it's about changing behavior, it's not about.
Yeah, a hundred percent, in in that, it's just, it's significant drop in in those violations, um and it was consistent. People just were not stopping, so just take advantage of the road design and allow them to to want through on a yield. I talked about it, uh Sunset's our highest volume, has been, probably always will be, just people coming out of the fifty-five zone into the city.
Even with all those signs given.
Yeah, and then as they leave the city, they tend to speed back up, um and that's our second highest issuance there as well. And then Twelton Sherwood here is um our lowest rejection rate of about one to three percent. I'll talk a little bit about what kind of happens with those. Uh, greatest technology is camera malfunctions. A lot, there's always, I shouldn't say always, there's just issues that that come up, uh weather related that make drivers unidentifiable, data, especially as we've transitioned over from Veramovability to or from Redflex to Veramovability, there's, there was a lot of data that was lost, um image, images, um and then the video sync, so I think we've gotten a lot of those kinks worked out, so there again, uh hopefully twenty twenty-five will be kind of our uh our platform and our base for moving forward. Obviously, it's been a successful program in the sense of uh trying to correct behavior, driving behavior. Unfortunately, one of the things that's been tried and true since two thousand ten is ninety percent of the violations are from outside the nine seven one four, nine seven one four zero zip code. Um, so although we're pretty compliant within the city, it's those that travel back and forth, especially on ninety-nine, to the casinos, to the coast, to wherever they're going. Technologies continue to get better. Cameras are actually great, um this is always one of our our biggest challenges, registration. Just bad registration, bad addresses, we get a lot of these returned to us, um so.
Or if like most of our kids' cars are in their parents' name, but the kid's the one driving, and so the kid's picture doesn't match the registration, that type of thing.
Yeah, that that can play into it as well. And like I said, uh, just the technology is obviously getting better, um and eliminating a lot of the uh malfunctions we have out there. They're still gonna be there, but uh hopefully they'll continue to be reduced.
I guess if we uh have the ability to cite people for driving in the dark without their lights on or driving without a license plate on the front of their car.
I mean, they could, if they got pulled over.
Yeah, some some of the secondary violations, um you know, legislation changed that here a while ago.
Oh, you can't do that?
Well, there are secondary violations that you can't stop them for, like uh no license plate light, no brake light, that can't be a primary stopper.
What about driving with no headlights? That's a safety.
Yes, yeah, you could. Um, I think people get so used to them automatically coming on that they don't pay attention.
That is so true.
Uh, and then there's the older cars that just don't have it.
I mean, that's why it's a type of a thing that it'd be great to be automated, so it'd no one being pulled over, hey, correct his behavior, show up to court, prove that it works, are your plates like your plates are on, whatever, these things that are just, yep, you get your vehicle um in check. But.
We do have a fix-a-ticket program, yeah, so for those kind of violations that we can stop them.
I know, but right, but.
Yeah, automated, yeah, yeah. Might be awesome. Uh, and that is it on the uh photo enforcement program, if you have any questions there. Just kind of wanted to give you a brief overview of where things were at and what was going on, and so there again, like I said, twenty twenty-five. Fingers crossed, all lights are up and functioning, all intersections are are doing what they're supposed to, so we'll we'll kind of see where things are at after this year.
I'm very appreciative of having those at those intersections. Uh, I I believe they've made a difference. There's still gonna be the the uh those traveling through our community that don't, but also technology in cars, you know, are alerting people of, you know, hey, if you're stupid, you're gonna get a ticket here. So that they're getting pre-warned often in the newer newer cars.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they are, yeah.
But clearly, they still ignore it.
Yeah, it is, I use Waze quite a bit and it's always going off, camera head or whatever it is, so.
Does it always ask if there's a policeman sitting in your car right now?
Well.
Because it always says, is there a policeman sitting by the side of the road? When I'm using Waze, and so I'm wondering if you're.
No, it doesn't, no. I do notice those when people like, people are where, yeah, like the officers are sitting, you're like, oh, huh, interesting. No, I don't have like a little blue, yeah. Police officer, I don't think. I mean, I don't know what I look like to other people on the road.
Except that you want less technical problems on it, but you also said the cameras are pretty good. Does the company that we lease those from or buy them from or whatever, do they cover the repairs and all that?
Yeah, they're always uh, they're always out there working on them, upgrading them, checking them, um, I mean overall, the system does well. I mean, it it have, if you've not ever seen a photo, you should come by. I mean, they're pretty detailed and you can zoom right in.
Yeah, hard roads. And I, um, are there any recommendations that we have, or is that come from the police advisory board? Just to put in more or to put in different places.
Well, the state recently has updated laws, so we can put mobile ones out there, we can put them, we put them pretty much anywhere, but I, to your point, I think that's a that's a project I think we should do, but it's starting to be. Yeah, yeah.
But if you can, do you see this as a valued complement to force uh and for the community?
Oh, a hundred percent. In particular, highway, no, I appreciate that, because as you know, highway ninety-nine is incredibly difficult to enforce because there's no place for an officer to sit and do this, and we have the big goalie in between, whatever you call that.
Yeah, you can't just like spin.
Yeah, so you can't. You're committed to one side or the other and and even then, it's very difficult to sit there somewhere outside the road, yeah.
And we don't need officers being subjected to people driving fifty miles an hour.
No, and I think you were on council fifteen years ago when our motor officer got hit. Uh, right there, twelfth, yeah, um, so yeah, it's incredibly dangerous. I think people forget, I mean I feel bad for the flaggers out there, just, I mean, they're out there on a daily basis and I can't imagine that, let alone when we're out there on traffic stops with lights. You know, and everybody knows we're there.
You don't have to have, because we have this, we don't have to have officers out patrolling, in which brings about to do other things.
It does.
Proactive policing in the city.
Don't have a motor cop anymore, Jerry?
We don't, not at the moment.
Is uh because of the little changes in the laws suggested, um, there's obviously the opportunity. So we have some sort of process to decide to to get a recommendation if we should have a mobile unit or not. And where a mobile unit should go for.
Oh, oh, yeah, like a van, yeah. Uh, so those have been around for quite some time. Uh, so those have been around for quite some time, uh, they just changed, I think the mayor was alluding to, uh, where you can put them now.
L Word is like at the top of the list.
Yeah, well, there again, we're, no place to park it. It's like ditches on both sides of the road, all the way up it.
We need to have a part of a, part of a road design, make sure we have places.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was more thinking Sunset, because we got the two elementary schools and. That's the, that's the place I hear the most complaints about.
There, there's, um, I think it's a great project for the traffic committee, committee to look at, because there's, there's newer technologies, you don't even need a van. You can temporarily put it on an existing light pole.
Yep.
And, and stuff like that, so there's a lot of opportunity. I just think we need to sit down and figure out cost benefit, safety. A great project for the.
Every, every time I, I don't go on L Word very often, man, they fly.
And my, we were coming the other day.
The other side of the, other side of ninety-nine likes gets love and some attention.
Where L Word's fifty-five, and then as you cross E D, it goes down to thirty-five.
Yeah.
But there's no sign coming that says reduce speed ahead.
County Road.
Yeah, so southbound there on L Word.
Like, if you're coming from Hoxby, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's no sign that says reduce speed.
Still need to get that school's on the sign, we need to pass the intersection too.
That's great.
That's all I got. I appreciate you, uh, bearing with me on my new program.
We're stretching you.
Well, thank you, Ty, and we are returned from our work session, and we'll get going again at seven o'clock for the regular meeting.